...the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please, pardon, do we have proof of motion?
Yes, ma'am.
And pardon, Captain, five-five-one, the Texas Republican Republicans, any of us in Texas or ladies and gentlemen? We'll have it on our afternoon meeting, we'll be talking about that in a few minutes. All right. Sheriff, would you like to speak to us about, well, if I ask that, let me say, since it is the members of the public who can speak for five minutes, if you would like to speak about the, about what is going on with the hurricane situation in our county?
All right. We've been trying to speak, you know, at least two to four days ahead, depending on what's going on down in Houston, staying in touch with the EOCs down there, working with the Broward County real heavy because they got a really awesome setup for their emergency management there. We have, obviously, a lot of support from the county, all over the county, which is normal, that's why Free Stone County's so great. We've got a lot of volunteers that have come together, there for a minute, we were kind of working against each other, I think, more than helping. Nicole Hughes, Sam's Restaurant, they kind of got a plan together to get all the volunteers, the churches, into one place, and of course, I went over there to assist in making sure everybody understood what we needed, what we were, what the state kind of was expecting from us as a county, in order to give them the help they needed. The plan, basically, as of right now, which is subject to change, depending on the rescinding of the water and people living on 45, we don't necessarily know how that's going to be yet. But as of right now, we are not going to have shelters in Free Stone County. They're not gonna, or, let me rephrase that, we're not going to have approved Red Cross shelters in Free Stone County. If that time comes, they'll notify us and we'll, we'll reexamine that, that issue. We do have nine hundred and fifty to a thousand evacuees in our county right now, in hotels, motels, a couple houses, RV parks, state park, I went to that state park this morning. So we do have them, we are not having any issues, no trouble. The churches are really taking, churches and the public are really taking care of people. We've got a list here that we have come up with, with the volunteers, where they, we have meals prepared for them, some entertainment on Saturday night from, from True Vine Church, and to try to help relieve some of the stress and, and issues that they're, they're facing, but we'll get free meals through Sunday at least, as of right now, until we replan again. There are locations on that list where they can get clothing, hygiene, anything they pretty much need, and also the four shelters that the state wants us to direct them to as they're flowing through. As of right now, a lot of the hotels and motels will stay, I think it's still one to three nights, they, they basically are using us for a station, and then they move on to the shelter, because at the shelter in Dallas, they're set up with medical, they're set up with FEMA contacts, they're set up with any and everything they need, hygiene, clothing, they've got everything at their hands, they're set up with, they can get up-to-date information immediately there, back home to, to, to what's going on. So that is our main purpose, is to keep them on the road, clothe them, get them hygiene, get them some gas, food and drinks, take care of them here, and, and, and get them safely to the shelter where they can get the rest of their things.
So they got the gas ports, did you mention that?
Yes, the volunteers actually came up with the idea of fuel cards, because that will be one of the main things, as you know, when we, when we went through this trial and error the whole state did, back in Katrina, well, as soon as you run out of gas, you run into major problems. So what we have tried to do is, these people are coming up with no money, with nothing, twenty bucks will get them to Dallas to one of these shelters, and they can get everything else they need there. So that, that, and on the fuel cards, what we're doing is, as they come in to the churches and organizations that are collecting them, they'll bring them to the sheriff's office, we'll keep them in dispatch, we'll know who brought them, how many they brought, and then when they go back out, we'll know who picked them up and how many they took. That way we've got a, a safe and secure way of delivering it and monitoring that situation. So, and while I'm at it, we are looking good, we're not having any problems or any issues. But while I'm at it, an issue arose in our meeting, that our gas stations may possibly be running out of gas here pretty soon. They're not getting trucks here. One of our backup plans was winter oil. They may not last to the end of the week if they don't get a truck yet. We, the commissioners, the sheriff's office, those of us that need to operate, when the time comes, we've got to have gas. So I'm recommending to you guys, you get full, your tanks, get them tanks full, because we may need it if we, if we run out of gas here, depending on what happens when the water sets. So.
Thank you.
We're just telling them that they didn't serve, or, that fuel for one of them. They couldn't run the smallest amount of fuel I thought, then I couldn't have looked. He's gonna bring eight-five hundred gallons.
You're not gonna ration it to sell the Texas flag, you're not gonna bring your whole lot.
I feel like you do.
You're gonna bring your four, five hundred gallons, whatever, but, uh, just go down, you set everything by the hour.
Get what you can, get what you're in.
We, we need to get what we can to be able to operate, I mean, if our office runs out of gas, and, oh, well, we're gonna sell, you know, and we still got...
You're gonna start yourself out some gas cards now?
(laughing).
(inaudible).
When, when, we're, because we're gonna be dealing with the vacuumy issues, possibly, all along with our regular, every day.
And that too, if that happens to bring on our gas, we could call the people in Ryan and get them to bring some for that purpose.
Remember, they're gonna have issues too, because they're...
Everybody's got issues.
Yes, so we're just trying, we just want to make sure we're topped off and ready to roll when that time comes, so at least get us a little further.
I know, generally, in, in, when members of the public speak, we can't talk and make any decisions, you know?
That was just, that was my recommendation and opinion.
Thank you, okay.
I just wanted to say that, along with, with the sheriff, today, in between court and different things, I was at both of the different hotel locations, we kind of have them set up. La Quinta is having all the dog food, kitty litter, cat food, because they're the only hotels that's accepting pets, and clothing, and then over at the Holiday Inn is the toiletries, diapers, all of that stuff, and the fire department has all the cleaning supplies, lots of bleaches, things like that. While I was over there, on the, on my lunch break, I was at the Holiday Inn, several came in, and just in tears, "And thank you, thank you, thank you so much for everything you're doing, thank you for helping us, we didn't know what we were gonna do, we want the, the corporate office to the hotel, we want the name of the city manager, we want this, we want that," because they, they're so grateful, they want to send back letters, they want people to know that we are making a difference here, and we are all working together and doing what's in the best interest for everyone, so thank everybody, and let's just continue to be the hands and feet that we're called to be, and make a difference and impact in these people's lives, because you never know when it's gonna turn around, and it's gonna, it may be our time that we've been hit. So, thank y'all.
And also, we're talking about here, but this county has responded south.
Yes.
There are, we've got a lot of citizens that responded with boats and trucks, and it's amazing, and, and I got feedback out of Cypress Springs, that we had so many Free Stone County people down there, they have a board where they got the different teams, we got like our own board of people, and that's awesome, that's, that's really amazing, it gives me chill bumps that, that our people respond like that.
And I'm getting, I'm from, born and raised in Conroe, and so all my friends down there are taking those pictures, and they're sending them to me, you know, via Facebook or text message, and it's like, you know, thank you so much for, you know, sending your teens. It does, it makes me proud, because my heart's always gonna be there, even though I'm here and, and active here and, and love here, love what I do, my heart's always gonna be home, so it does make me very proud. So thank y'all very much.
Just, just one for two times, we'll talk, we'll talk about that later in the morning. All right, anything else? No, we'll go to item number one, which is the interlocal agreement for emergency notification service, and that's fine to come talk off. We have to renew this every year, and it is the same agreement, the interlocal agreement for these services, these services are the notification system that is in, you might know this, I'm just talking to you, is at the sheriff's department, and you can, if there's an emergency, or if there's something that a group of people need to know, you can pick that area that needs to get a message, and they can send that out, call and leave messages, or give a message to whoever answers. So it can be, you know, if you have a bridge out and you need people to know, they can single out that area and send those kinds of messages.
I'm gonna hear the motion.
Do that, and it doesn't cost us any money. We have a motion, it's an often, the agreement, I, or any opposed, join the motion here. Item number two is to discuss the commission for meeting dates and times. We talked last time about the attorney general opinion that had come out, and that we are gonna need to meet more often in order to approve the payroll and the bills, because they can't have us, just a, Friday checks is what we used to call them, for utilities and those kinds of things, that were just automatically gonna be approved. What, we've kind of talked about what might work, looking at, looking at the payroll schedule, and probably Wednesdays like we're doing, we can do it Wednesday morning, if we're meeting every week. If you wanted to meet a little earlier, I hate it, but we could meet at eight o'clock. If y'all want to meet every Wednesday morning at eight o'clock, we could meet Wednesday afternoon, but that seems to be a little, it's more disruptive. Meet early in the morning, it'd be done, maybe our meetings will be shorter too, because we'll have one every weekend, well. She read those out. So, we'll keep it on Wednesdays, eight o'clock or nine o'clock.
What time can everybody be?
I can be here at eight o'clock. I could be here at seven-thirty, but...
I don't care what time, why would everybody be?
Nine, I'll remember, what's good for them?
Or nine, we can leave it at nine, you say?
No difference. Matt, get it, I'll say that.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. Wednesday morning is at nine, gotta be, trying to keep it streamlined so you won't have to think, now this week is in the afternoon, or the morning, or, you know, one time we had it at an earlier time, we don't need to keep it that way, so, nine o'clock, every Wednesday morning.
Do, do we have to figure out?
Until, until, they can hopefully do something to address the issues, and maybe we can go back to the one, I don't know.
Did they have to figure out now, if you're on vacation?
I, I spoke with an attorney at TAC, and we, whoever we have, they feature a stamp, and it can be used.
Can you use your own stamp?
You can.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we got notice, otherwise?
I can't tell someone else what to do in their office. My employee is authorized to use my stamp only to stamp checks, and that's because there's hundreds of them. She's not authorized to use my stamp for anything else. What was told to us back before you were there, Jeremy, because you had such a large office, there was four or five different people authorized to use the stamp, and the guy in Cecil was here, she said, "Don't do that, because you don't really know who used the stamp." And I said, "You have them signed after that." Could they ask them, I know we can't tell them, but could we ask them to just put their initials, if they stamp it with the, like, somebody stamped yours, and you didn't take permission to do it, and then just put their initials, so you always know they stamped it?
No, we're, we're, we're usually here to sign them, so...
It, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be every, every payroll, if you're just in case somebody is on vacation, if you're on vacation, that's all that's supposed to include.
Anytime somebody uses my stamps in my office or signs my name, it's always by their name.
Right. Okay, we'll go to number three, electronic cold book sales order agreement. Yes, she is.
Judge, just ask, do we need a motion on the Wednesday?
Well, we're already meeting at nine all those other times.
Okay, that's fine, you say.
And we'll be posting it, so. On the Wednesdays at nine.
We may not have had it, I'm just asking.
We could make a motion to make that, you know, we vote in the beginnings of years when we're gonna set court dates, so we could vote to set additional court dates on, so that we have a meeting every Wednesday at nine o'clock.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting.
Right. As we set, all favor I. Any votes? (laughing). Electronic cold books. We talked about these, you were saying anything else about them?
Uh, no, you budgeted for them, and we just have to have a signature on the agreement, the commission court.
Did you get the, did this?
Yes, he looked it over, and he said, "Everything's good."
Good, okay, and... Now, this is just a sales order agreement, but nonetheless, Donna, since we, I'm sure, have something with them, are we okay?
I don't know, I haven't seen any agreement either before.
Here, no, please, did you deliver the... Uh-huh.
It's just, yes, that's our election, it's on the software.
This is just proposed. We just buy, we just, we lay sand, have to have a motion, or something. I'll see what you say, you need to pull that, we may have to have a special meeting on this, but there's a standard saying that we'll be on the, so...
Yeah, there's the...
But, okay, but I, they, we may not, we're gonna need one of the others to...
You'll be, you'll be, you'll be out, Marlena.
I hope it will.
It will be.
I hope.
This is a motion, just... See, bedroom stage is on seven, so we can have a, I, four, and we can, we're gonna have it at eight-four. Okay. This is a sales agreement, they're purchasing something, we're not agreeing to something that is, you know, a lease or...
Perfect, okay. We're gonna have a motion to approve. We can purchase these cold books, and it is the amount that we budgeted, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, that always comes out, good. Will we get them in this year?
Yes, ma'am. Do you mean budget years? Oh.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Oh, well, I guess that's up to the court, I mean, we would like to have them for the November election.
If we can get them, that'd be good. Let me share with y'all, I do have some election bills that I've tried to remind y'all, elections aren't just elections, they're year-round. We've already done and got stuff in for this coming up election, and we have no money in the budget paper stuff, so, we have bills I've sent to the auditor's office, they are gonna have to make some decisions on which you present some, because there's no money there. We see, it is, we have a motion, it's very second. We have a second, all favor I, any votes?
Right, yeah.
Motion, Carrie.
Right.
Here you go.
One of them.
Right, right, yes, yeah, that's what I thought you meant. Purchasing a truck, there's a mission, three, six, two.
Vote for next year, yeah.
All favor I, any opposed? Item number five, discuss trade-in courthouse vehicles.
What kind of guy I'm looking?
And we have one that has over two hundred thousand miles on it, we have problems with it.
What is that, what kind is it?
A truck.
Only three, two.
Just, just warming it up to a thousand, we're looking to.
Well, I was thinking about trading it in on a used truck that had a little less mileage.
Does this include the one we drive that you had sent some back into something different, so you can use for elections?
Well, we're gonna talk about that, okay, and actually, we already voted to sell that one, so, if we can find something, then we'll talk about that one, we may have that one on the next one.
Would one of his vehicles work, just already talked about it?
Okay.
Okay, cool.
I tried it.
All we got is a real, still, so, all we got is brown hills, and Sheriff's talk about this one.
Today, but I, we will, because I've been searching on that.
So which one are we trading?
It's the one that has the nine-hundred-one stuff in it, and I'm just like, you know, something that has little less miles, well, a lot less miles, it's not a new truck.
Three miles ago, two hundred?
Two, maybe two eighty.
Okay.
And we had trouble, it leaks, a windshield leaks, and we can't get that fixed, and I, yeah, I'll come back. We have a motion.
It's on the wall?
Yeah, we want to come back on that. I put a S on there, because I'm gonna...
You're gonna take this on, still do?
No, if I'm used one, we don't have to do that, is that right?
Actually, it's a disposal of an asset, so you can approve it being traded in on another one. Or you can just steal the asset.
One of y'all would like to volunteer to help with that done, I appreciate it, because I'm watching the vehicles.
Where are you going, right?
I was thinking somewhere in the county, find, you know, get up and find us something that's reasonable.
You wanna pick up or call?
Or we drive.
Or four?
Nine, one more. Because he goes down on the road.
Okay, great.
Or I try, there's not, I'm sure we won't need it.
That's frozen, that's frozen heckling shape.
(laughing).
At least.
I knew that was right.
Yeah.
How's that do it, boys? Ain't nobody done that. I go to the sheriff.
You don't get with that? Thank you, okay. We have, we have a motion, it's second, we vote, but...
We vote, you know, what's good for them?
Your motion.
Who says?
You second it, you...
I'll second, I'll second.
Did you?
I will vote for it.
You made the motion.
Number one, and second number three.
Second number three, all in favor I. Any opposed? All right. Consider reappointing Cynthia Gage and Cynthia Shad to the Free Stone County Child Protective Services Board to expire August of twenty, they've been on there for a month.
May I speak more?
All favor I. Any opposed? Consider disposal of all of her office floppy diskits.
My new assistant, first thing she did is cleaned out our office supplies, came up with this little box of diskits, and I was a little worried, and all of them had value, so I was going to ask, "How come I got deals for about fifteen bucks?"
Great, probably they might.
(laughing). What's a floppy disk? He said, "What's a floppy disk?"
Do we have a motion?
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say.
All favor I, any votes? Motion, Carrie. Budget transfer is amended.
By the court, this transfer request, and we do have one contingency on there, it has been highlighted.
I like the motion, the motion. Transfer, where would we, I don't transfer.
Is there a second?
I said.
Has another second?
Oh.
All favor I, any opposed? Okay, all favor I, any opposed? All right, let's look at it. All right. Review, I do have coffee this year, holiday, Liz, we're not gonna take this up until the next, next meeting.
What's that?
Okay, you got one? Give it up.
Now, one of us, the old one, that I wrote on here, we'll probably call that that next time, so you can review it.
One, two, yeah.
Yes.
Can I, can I make a comment, since we're talking?
On what now?
On this holiday, y'all keep talking about...
We're gonna have it on the agenda to approve, but not today. We have to make a comment.
I, I, I know, I know we're not making a decision or nothing, I just want to make a comment, I know it's been brought up before, but, you know, our office is a twenty-four-seven deal, and I would rather see our office... and I would rather see our office not have to schedule these guys a holiday, and if they work it, which, our schedule stays the same, if they work it, I would rather get them the time and a half than I would to have to try to schedule them a day off, that hurts its manpower later. Because we have to schedule these guys each month for a holiday to make sure they get them, because they may not get them on these days, and so it's just easier for my office and to make sure we...
We can respond to that.
I know, I know, and have manpower.
What are we talking about, though? All right, the last item is to approve the payroll. You know, we should not do that, because we approved the payroll with the budget, so we didn't feel like we had to approve the payroll, but now by this new, this new, as you can, we have to approve it every year, so we have a motion to approve the payroll.
Shouldn't we make it out?
Yeah. Did you make it?
I made it.
And there is a thank you. We may not get paid this time. Is there a second to approve the payroll?
We all will sit together, second, we'll sit here, we got to this, we, we will stay and visit after, so no, we're not, I'd like to second it, so we're gonna sit here.
Okay, let's visit, I'm very busy than I am at any time this time.
I second it.
Oh, you're gonna listen to me, busy, okay. All favor eye, any votes? Comments from the commissioner's court here, Bruce?
The way you can make some kind of ticket, you can see, you know, it's burner ban, it will be...
It'll be on the next one.
It's supposed to be on November, maybe.
Well, somehow it fell off.
Yeah, you pop over, you did it before, I only got, this is not, can we make...
Well, we know.
All they don't want, everybody, you know, wanna play, and they're wearing me out, but...
We can have a meeting Tuesday, come on, David.
You can't pull a truck, or do something.
Can you do it in a margin of six inches?
No, because we voted on it, so it has to be voted to take it off.
I'll tell you, they're wearing me out.
I'm sorry? Well, I didn't notice it, I apologize. I like to make a comment, I kinda echo with what, what they've said, that I am very proud of our county, and how the people have stepped up. There are churches that are cooking all the time, there are people that are bringing clothes all the time, scads of clothes, everybody is just really pulling through, and we are very blessed not to have had an issue in our county, so that we are able to help other people, but I thank all y'all that are working so hard and doing.
You know, another comment on that, I don't know how they're gonna overcome, our county road, I don't know how they're gonna overcome that, if everybody's gonna go back like it was, I'm just not gonna have that face, they got too much to work. And I'd say, that's really, and I'd like to keep our general fund, our money, but we can have the money to call Black County, we go back to give it, we're gonna go to all camps, our last, they don't have the money at all, I'm sure enough, they need to keep our...
You know, I'm sure none of, most of them would have never thought that it would end as bad as it is, and most of us know, the one's right on the coast, you know, but so far in.
Talking to the commissioner down in front of the conversation. They, they have, they history think they have roads that have this Washington road, and he's talking about operating on their budget, they already in, not having money, trying to wait on emergency money, roads that they have, have already closed, so we are truly blessed that they took a turn, went up a different way, to be standing in line with all those other counties, trying to wait on some type of release to head on to...
They may get some help, who knows when, you know?
And so I appreciate all of the people, and appreciate how we did have stuff to wait, and give them their time, I know there's some employees that took off and gave them time to go and help, and I'm very grateful for, maybe in Freestone County, just seeing people, how they come together, and, yeah, I know, thanks, that, come out, eat some hot dogs, bouncing the bounce lines.
Yeah, okay.
Still want to know if I'm calling that?
I may not do that.
That one doesn't go through, I got two other...
All right, then we're adjourned. One more.